Okay, it is Thursday, August 13th, and it is 6:00 PM. And we are having our city council and joint Visit Bassdrop meeting. So from a city council standpoint, we have more than a quorum here in the room. And then we have Councilmember Jackson virtually. So it's 6:00 PM, and I'm calling us to order. Ms. Raymond?
Visit Bassdrop Board of Directors will hold an annual joint workshop with the city council tonight, Thursday, August 13th at 6:00 PM. Visit Bassdrop reserves the right to reconvene, reassess, and realign the regular session or call executive session order of business at any time prior to adjournment. And then can those who are home watching us who are part of Visit Bassdrop please share your webcam with us? So we may see you. Is that right? Okay. That's what I got.
Okay, I have a couple of housekeeping things. We're set up awkwardly, but this was the best way to get everyone with more than six feet apart and get the most number of people in the room. Those of you that are sitting in the audience, the microphones, there are a couple of things you need to know. If you are not talking, please turn them off because they'll create feedback. Number two, when you do want to talk, we want to hear you, and you must get obnoxiously, uncomfortably close to the microphone, or we're not going to be able to hear you. So if you turn it on and just start talking, you'll hear somebody calling behind you or me will say, "We can't hear you." And you really have to get kind of obnoxiously close. The good news is you're the only one speaking into the microphone. So we don't, from a COVID standpoint, you don't have to share a microphone with anybody. So moving on to item two on the agenda is citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone registered for citizen comments for this meeting?
No, ma'am.
All right, we are done with citizen comments. Moving over to page three for the work session, our one and only item is to review the city's contract with Visit Bassdrop dated September 12, 2017 regarding scope of service and deliverables. The Visit Bassdrop Board and council, I will remind you, although I know all of you are familiar with the fact that one of the items that's in the contract that was signed was that there would be an annual joint meeting. And so we normally do that, try to do that a little earlier in the year. Council, I'll remind you that we have workshops next week where we will be talking about some of the things that were presented to us last Tuesday at our council meeting. And one of those items that specifically will be on next week's agenda is hot funds. And certainly, Visit Bassdrop is a big part of that. Just a reminder to everybody who's watching us online, this is a work session, so you'll be a little less formal. There'll be a presentation, but council, if you have questions, please feel free to jump in and ask questions. We'll want to be clarifying that as we go along. But there won't be any votes taken tonight. All right, with that, I will hand it over. Is it Ms. Raymond or Ms. Smith who's going to run the show? All right.
I already messed up. I will start. So thank you for having us, everyone. Councilmembers, appreciate it. My name is Mindy Raymond. I am the Chair for Visit Bassdrop, and I am lucky to be joined here by both the staff of Visit Bassdrop as well as our executive board who are in person, who I will recognize. So we have Susan Smith, who's our President and CEO, Cherry K. Abel, who's our Director of Sales, she is not present tonight, Ashton LaFuentes, our Marketing Manager, and then Kristi Hahn is our Marketing Coordinator. So joining me on the executive board, we have Kevin Plunkett, who's my co-chair. He's also the Market Segment for Restaurant. We have Kay Sapikas?
Sapikas.
Sapikas. It's a tough one for me, the Greek name. Who's our Treasurer, the Market Segment, she's in is History. And then we have Brenda Abbott, who's our Secretary, and her Market Segment is Venues and Special Events. Not joining us, but virtually here, I guess we'll assume they're here, is our Visit Bassdrop Board of Directors. And again, just keeping in mind, everyone, this is a volunteer board, and we thank them for their time and support of everything that we're doing here for Bassdrop. So I have Sean Plesh, Jamie Cracy, Kathy Danielson, Tom Dickey, Nassim Kansari Nanani, Terri Moore, Marcus O'Connor, Keith Spindon, Vina Tawani, and Becky Wumble. So that is our Board of Directors. I would like to now read our Visit Bassdrop vision and mission. Our mission for Visit Bassdrop promotes and develops community and area brand experiences through a targeted destination strategy that drives economic growth and quality of place. Our vision, Visit Bassdrop realizes the destination vision through effective leadership and implementing impactful visitor promotion, experience, and advocacy partnerships. Now, everyone, we have a very thick packet here. Don't worry, we're not going to be here till midnight. We will be going through this efficiently and effectively. So I am now going to turn it over to our CEO and President, Susan.
Yes, and don't panic by the size of the presentation. I just wanted to mention that each slide is a deliverable. We also, some of these slides, there's no changes from last year because it's our core business. And I left them in there, the reason that I left them in there was for Councilmember Jackson and our new city manager, so that they could have a little bit of history as we moved on. So I'm going to move through this a little quicker than we would have. I also wanted to let you know that the scope of, when you see scope of services 2.1, you might see scope of services 2.2C right behind it. Basically, what I did is just, for the presentation purposes, it's not numerical in sequence, it's just in terms of flow. It flows easier, but there are page numbers for you to follow along. So I wanted to just say that. And you know that we, DMO, we're a DMO, we're a destination marketing organization, and we, we just went over what our mission is, so don't need to go over that again. And we're funded through the hotel occupancy tax hot funding. Since the 1960s, the hot fund's been around.
I think there's somebody trying to get in. Is that what we're trying? Okay.
Thank you. The Board of Directors, as Mindy mentioned, is a 15-member seat, representing 11 industry sectors. And our scope of services is, again, to attract leisure visitors to the city and its vicinity, as well as securing meetings, events, retreats, and conventions to the city. The additional scope of services are carrying out the actions defined in our business plan and provide expertise in destination management, leveraging our community assets. One of our deliverables is that the city allows Visit Bassdrop to utilize city-owned facilities, which we are grateful for. Our accreditation, I'm so excited, and last year I mentioned this, that we were accepted into the program. We are making real strong headways with this in terms of getting the standards and writing up everything we need to write. It's a very lengthy process, but we're hoping by next year that we will have the certification.
Like by this time, this meeting next year?
Oh, yes. Yes, absolutely.
That would be fantastic.
Yeah, that'll be very exciting.
Ms. Smith, would you kind of fill us in on what kind of accreditation? I mean, what's the benchmarks for this accreditation? And what does it actually do as far as promoting the job at hand?
So it's approximately 200 standards that a destination organization follows. So it's like a handbook, if you will, of rules, best practices. What it does is just making sure that we are doing the right thing for the industry. So there's certain things in there, like X amount of your visitors are leisure, X amount of your visitors are meetings. One of the standards is a description of my relationship with the city council and with the other people in town. Another standard is simple, is being trademarked. We have to, our slogan has to be trademarked. So it's a set of standards that really, it's a rulebook so that we're all, anybody that is certified is following the same set of rules, the same set of budget, how they do their budgets, how they redo their reporting, how they, we do our economic impact, excuse me, so that we're all talking from the same page.
So it's centered around quality?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, definitely quality. And we are going for, there's regular certification, but we're going for certification with honors.
Great.
So you got that on video, right?
Outstanding, thank you.
Hold me to that one. That's a great question. Thank you for asking. So our strategic, we actually had our strategic plan in place earlier this year in January. We had some tweaking to do that, we just presented it for approval to the Board on April 16th, but we've been operating under this new three-year strategic plan. And it just basically, it outlines the core elements of our direction and which way we're going forward with brand marketing, and it's inclusive of all of our stakeholder participation. So what I did is to not go through the entire lengthy strategic plan, is I just said, here's some highlights from pre-COVID, pre-COVID times, what are some of the action items that we had on the plan, and then in the wake of COVID, how we have modified that plan going forward. So pre-COVID, you know, everything that we've done in the past, convert our day trippers into overnight visitors, make sure that we launch targeted integrated marketing campaigns, and you know, we're going after the leisure traveler, the meeting planner, local community and tour operators. Well, then, in the wake of COVID, we decided that we now have to sort of make a little modification to that, and so we had a three-step plan for five months so that we can be more reactive. As we all know, things were changing daily, so we had to look at this almost sometimes on a weekly basis of how do we forward our, do our marketing. So we came up with those three steps in recovery. The first one was to focus on our tourism opportunities. The second one is the priority tourism strategies and activities. And then number three, investing our tourism resources wisely. This plan that we came up with was also with the help of a consultant, and this is based on what other DMOs are doing kind of nationwide in terms of their recoveries as well. We are way ahead of the curve against other DMOs, so we've done a really good job, and this has kept us very focused. Okay, so right now, we get into the meat of our organization and like really who we are and how we do everything. Ashton's going to present the marketing portion of this. You'll notice that on some of the pages, it says pre-COVID, post-COVID, in the wake of COVID. Again, this is just being very nimble and being able to meet the needs at the time as they were presented.
Alrighty, let's jump right in. We are on page 17, and the first, another one, thank you. So when we did our branding process, we engaged an agency by the name of Augustine, and then after the branding process, we brought them on board as our full-term ad and PR agency. So we basically maintained that relationship with them for this fiscal year. Having them on board gives us access to a team of designers and industry experts to elevate and expand on our efforts. Like I said, we've been in sync with them since 2018, but in the light of the COVID-19 pandemic, we did suspend those efforts, and we had applied our three-step recovery plan. Page 19, our creative concept. Like Susan mentioned earlier, some of these slides haven't changed, and as a new brand, we have actually, we are continuing to beat the drum with our creative concept, which consists of our voice and tone, our brand values, our brand pillars, brand positioning, and brand promise. Page 19, content marketing is one of our big initiatives that we work with not only the agency on, but we do some of that stuff in-house. And content marketing is basically a form of marketing focused on creating, publishing, and distributing content for a targeted audience. We work with influencers, we work with TripAdvisor, we have a healthy email marketing campaign, and content marketing is still a very active part of our efforts, even though we have shifted those efforts a little bit to be a little bit more community-focused. Our creative strategy is really focused around the Continued Welcome to It All campaign. This is our second year supporting the brand campaign, and we communicate this strategy through public relations, social channels, print, digital advertising, partnerships, and co-ops.
And I'd like to mention that we just received approval for our trademark. So that, by the time this went to print, we don't have the little TM on there, but it is trademarked now.
Yay. Our campaign concept is called Welcome to It All. It is, Welcome to It All is the tagline that was created around a concept that was approved by our marketing committee during our branding process. We use this verbiage that you see on this page repetitively in our marketing efforts to create consistency for our brand. Our target audience on the next slide, slide 22. Our target audience is our leisure travelers, our meeting and event planners, and our local community. And geographically, we target Houston, Austin, San Antonio, Bassdrop, and Dallas. The next slide is kind of a recap of our logos that we had created in year one. We partnered with a local artist to create a small library of iconography to complement our standing logo. So we will, depending on the messaging and where we're placing our logos, we do switch those out, and it's kind of a really fun part of our branding process, so we enjoy that part of it. These logos are also tied back to our industry sectors. Slide number 24, our marketing goals. As a relatively new DMO, most of our marketing goals have been focused around awareness of our destination. In light of the COVID-19 pandemic, obviously, there was a time where we weren't promoting direct travel to our destination, so we did shift some of that focus to be a little bit more community-driven. Onto the next slide, slide number 25. It's just a summary of, you know, kind of like the top-level things that we work on in the marketing department. So you know, we have account management and public relations, content development, and you can see the list there. Our print campaign, we highlighted some of the publications that we're in, and then in our digital advertising, we highlighted who we digitally advertise with. And then followed by the COVID-19 summary on the right-hand side, and you can see which items were paused in March and which items continued to function. Page 26 is just a more in-depth look at our print campaign. So you can see that we do have quite a healthy print campaign. We run ads in several different magazines, and at the bottom there, those three print ads were affected. So out of our entire campaign, those were probably the only three that didn't run for the fiscal year. The next slide is just a visual of the ads that you would have seen in some of those magazines. Depending on which magazine and, you know, what we were, who we were targeting, we would throw one of these different ads in those magazines. Moving on to page 28, social media influencers. This was a key component of our marketing efforts, and you know, they're very viral articles. You bring the influencers into town, they go out and experience a bunch of fun things, and they write a really cool article that is very fun to share. But obviously, during the wake of the COVID pandemic, we kind of shifted those efforts, and we kind of paused that for the interim time. Slide number 29, digital advertising. Before the DMO was established, Bassdrop had an inconsistent or non-existent presence on most or some of these top trip planning and travel sites. We work with Google Search for search engine marketing. We have a dedicated profile that is optimized with content and calls to action on TripAdvisor, Tour Texas, and Texas Highways. With the exception of Google Search Engine marketing, the rest of these efforts were paused and shifted in the light of the COVID pandemic using our three-step recovery plan. This page has probably what looks like a lot of foreign language on it to you guys, but what I really wanted to do was highlight, you'll see underneath listing page views, you'll see the conversion rate, and you'll see how we compare against the industry. So this whole slide was just to show you guys how well we're performing against the industry, even in light of the pandemic. I do want to call out under bounce rate, you can see the industry metric there, but it was an error on my part. The bounce rate for us is 42%. So there should have been a comparison there for you guys to view, and I did not put that on there. But as you can see, you can see how, you know, we're comparing against the industry. Website conversion rate is the ratio of visitors to your website that then go and take on the desired action you're requesting them to do. So a well-performing website averages between 10% to 15% conversion rate.
So Ashton, was people doing the puzzles one of the reasons that they were hanging out on your website?
The puzzle page was actually the, people spent the most amount of time on the puzzle page.
That was awesome.
We averaged about two minutes per page, but that one had about four and a half minutes on it.
Am I the only one that did the puzzles? Did you guys do the puzzle? They were so, that was such a fun thing to do, and I thought the pictures that you guys chose were just spot-on, and it was, you know, it was at a time, in my memory, the puzzles came out at a time when we were all like, I have had COVID up to here, and it just to do something different and to, it was a spark of hope of, you know, I'll be back on the river and things will be okay. So whoever's idea that was, just outstanding, outstanding. And I wondered if that was part of, that had to help your website.
Absolutely, it did. And it was a lot of fun, too, obviously, because you said we were all kind of fed up with COVID and looking for fun ways to get people daydreaming, really.
So, great job. Great job on that.
Ashton, before you continue, remind us once again what a conversion rate and bounce rate is?
So a bounce is when somebody comes to your page and they almost leave immediately. So they don't spend 10 seconds on the page. The conversion rate is, for us, we like to convert people to, we're not selling products, so a conversion rate could be buying a product, but in our case, it's getting people off of our website and onto our member partners' websites through our calendar of events, through our listings on our website for our member partners. And so when we count a conversion, it's whenever someone leaves our website and travels onto one of our member partners' websites to view their offerings. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Ennis, did you have a question?
No, she didn't.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to slide 30, let's see, where am I at? Did I go ahead of myself?
31.
There you are. Okay. Again, we have an app. I encourage you guys, if you don't have it downloaded, to go to the Google Play Store or your iTunes Store. It's available in both iOS and Android versions. It's a labor of love. It's fun. We're working on adding some itineraries to that. One of the coolest features about it is that it gives you the ability to plan your trip. So as you're looking, there's little plus signs on the bottom, and you can just hit the plus sign, it'll add it to a trip for you, create an itinerary, you can print it off, and it will calculate it on a map for you. So that's a really fun little tool that we've been working on. I'm going the wrong way. We also have a monthly newsletter. We have two targets for this newsletter. One is meetings, and one is leisure. And we've kind of put some screenshots in there for you. Again, we've got really good open rates and really good click-through rates on this newsletter. Those go out once a month. So we have one leisure newsletter that goes out, and one meeting planner newsletter that goes out. And they have two completely different audiences.
And we have two very different mailing lists, which we're continuing to grow.
Okay, moving on to community and signage and billboards. I hope you guys have noticed the new downtown billboard. It's actually, let's see, "It's west-facing as you head east over the Colorado River on 71. This board serves several purposes. It highlights one of our brand pillars, which is our historic downtown. It creates a brand presence within our own community, and it generates awareness that Bassdrop has an historic downtown which cannot be seen by the highway." I don't know how many times, you know, since I've been working here at Visit Bassdrop that we hear people say, "Oh, you know, I've been to Bassdrop, I was on my way to Houston," or "I've been to Buc-Ee's," or "I've been to Hyatt." And really, we are so much more than those individual assets, and so I think calling attention to that historic downtown that people probably don't even know is there if they don't get off the highway was a really fun aspect of putting this board together. And then on the right-hand side of that slide is our board that sits out in front of, kind of by the New Haven Assisted Living. These guys you haven't seen yet, but you will see them soon. We've partnered with the Bassdrop KOA, and they've got some double-stacked billboards on the highway. Becky is notorious for getting up there and painting those boards, and they let us wrap both sides of them. So we're going to have From Rich History to Hyatt Regency, and from back porch sipping to front porch picking covered on those boards soon, too. And they'll kind of be right next to the bigger guy that's kind of right over the river there. So that'll be cool to see those stacked up against each other. Next Tuesday or Wednesday. So early next week, those will be installed. These guys right here aren't new, but they're still pretty, all up and down Chestnut. We've got the flagpole banners, as well as the ones on Main Street. And then we worked with the city to increase the size of our flags going across the Colorado River Bridge. So they're a little bit longer, just as narrow, but a little bit longer, and I think they're much more visible than the shorter ones that were up there previously. I mentioned early that we were doing a lot of content marketing, but kind of shifting it to be a little bit more community-focused, and this Safe, Clean, Ready initiative on slide number 36 is one of the ways that we kind of shifted those efforts. We created this because we wanted to help businesses get a jumpstart on their reopening, you know, to reopen safely during the pandemic. We developed some health and safety initiatives, asked our hospitality partners to sign a pledge, and then we delivered window clings and posters to those participating businesses. And it's just, you know, I know personally that whenever I went into town, if I saw people who had their protocols and their safety measures up, I was more inclined to go into those businesses. And so I know it's kind of a lot to wrap your head around, and so it was just a really, it was fun, and it was a helpful initiative.
And as we get further in this presentation, you'll see some economic trends that I'll be talking about, and one of the economic trends is visitors coming to your area and staying at your hotels. And the hotels and the businesses that put this information forefront, put it right out there, have been the most successful, because the visitors want to know what you're doing about health and safety. So although this may not drive 100% of heads and beds, it's what visitors are looking
Moving on to the blog, we, content, this is content marketing, and this is a way that we shifted it to be community-focused. Since we weren't promoting direct travel to our destination, we did want to still be the forefront of travel and keep our destination top of mind, so we did shift some of our efforts. The top one is just a beautiful distraction. It's full of daydreamy shots and planning tips and inspiration, followed by simple things you can do now to support the Bassdrop community. Where to stream fitness classes in town, and then, like the mayor mentioned, the jigsaw puzzles. And you can see right there on the bottom, time on page average, 4 minutes, 49 seconds. So the blog, we've really been using to, you know, to put our messaging out there right now. The Hometown Holler was a recent one that we also did just recently. It was a feel-good initiative designed to spotlight community members going above and beyond during the COVID-19 pandemic. The contest ran for over two weeks and received 40-plus submissions. We picked the winners last week, and we will be announcing those next week on our social We've also launched the Holiday Open Art Call for Visit Bassdrop's official holiday ornament and postcard. This contest is still running through August 15th, and then we will pick some submissions and have our very first ornament and postcard.
We have received some submissions from some very young children, and they are amazing. So I can't wait.
Again, some more community-focused initiatives on slide number 41. This was actually picked up by the statesman in their newspaper, which was fun, and we really just knew people were locked in their houses, and as soon as we opened up the parks and the trails, we knew we had to put something down there to make people feel good when they were getting out of the house. And so this was a fun project, too. But again, I think what Susan said, we know what visitors were looking for during that time.
We also, I actually saw them on a neighborhood forum, and when these signs went out, a day or two after, the neighborhood forums just like blew up. "Have you seen the signs? Have you seen the signs? You guys got to go check them out." So I've got people outside, too.
Yeah, I was going to tell you, I got several emails myself that said, "Thank you so much, and this is great." And then it was followed by, "Why can't you make everyone be kind?" But it was, it was very inspirational. It was nice. Well-received.
And then on page 42, this is kind of our performance targets that we kind of measure up ourselves against the year. Our goals for this year were based off of our successes from last year. As you can see, some of our efforts were suspended in March while other elements remained active, and I'm very, I'm fully certain that if we had continued to push those efforts for the rest of the year- And I'm, I'm, I'm very, I'm fully certain that if we had continued to push those efforts for the rest of the year, we would have far surpassed all of the goals that we had put in place for this year. Some of the items that we worked on, even though we suspended the majority of like our PR pitches, we still were able to do some of those from our desks as well. But for the most part, the items in red were suspended in March and the items in green, we continue to keep trucking down the road with. Does anybody have any questions over what I've presented? Thank you.
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get definitions down. What is my immersive travel?
I, I feel like it's kind of whenever, you know, a lot of people just kind of go vacation and they hit the, the spots. But I think immersive travel is when you really immerse yourself in the destination and do the things that not just the visitors do, but that the locals do as well.
And my last definition is influencers versus micro-influencers.
In, that's just a level of following right there. An influencer will have more clout, more people following them on Facebook. Micro-influencers, I would say, if you wanted numbers, you could say an influencer probably has over 100,000 people following them on socially. And a micro-influencer probably has a more targeted audience. So they're probably reaching who they want to reach, but they probably only have about 20 to 30 people, thousand people following them.
Outstanding. See, my desire to learn. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Does that mean you're a micro-influencer or?
I'm a non-influencer.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a small break from all of these numbers and definitions. And we have a very big special announcement to make. We have some really fun, big news that we want to share with you. And so at this time, I'm going to introduce Chip Adams and he is with the Music Friendly Texas Music Office. Chip?
Hi, everybody. Hope you can hear me okay. Sitting here in Austin, really a pleasure to be with you this evening. I really wish that we could be celebrating this wonderful occasion in person rather than over teleconferencing. But just consider this a rain check because I can't wait to be in Bassdrop with all of you, watching some amazing live music. I'm sure you're seeing a little pattern here. We're talking about Bassdrop music. I want to thank Susan Smith and Kristi Hunn from Visit Bassdrop, as well as Mayor Schrader for having me today. So my name's Chip Adams and I'm the Community Relations and Outreach Specialist for the Texas Music Office. For those of you who are not familiar with the TMO, we're a 30-year-old office. We are a part of the Economic Development and Tourism Division of the Office of the Governor. The TMO, we're here to create opportunity and connect businesses, to provide information, and to be a liaison between the Texas music industry and government offices, to promote our vibrant, wonderfully diverse music industry and to help it grow by fostering economic development. For those of you who don't know much about us, you can also learn more about the Texas Music Office. You can learn about our mission and recent developments at TexasMusicOffice.com. Now, the Texas music industry and Texas music in general is such a huge part of our identities as Texans. And it's also a vital business for the Texas economy. Statewide, music accounts for just under 97,000 permanent jobs and over $9.6 billion in annual economic activity. So Texas music is big, big business and we need to take care of it. And that's what I love about our Music Friendly Communities Program. We get to work with cities that have put music in the forefront, giving it the attention it needs in each city, and that includes Bassdrop. Now, over the past few months, the City of Bassdrop has put together a Music Friendly Communities Workshop. They've assembled an advisory board, worked with us on our Texas Music Industry Database, and assigned our memorandum of understanding. So now that you guys have completed the checklist, Bassdrop now joins Footworth, Austin, San Antonio, Denton, Lyndale, Stephenville, Conroe, San Angelo, Nacogdoches, Abilene, McKinney, Waxahachie, Alpine, and Waco, as our 15th official certified music friendly community. Bassdrop is now a part of the first truly connected group of music cities within a state here in the U.S., which is something to be really, really proud of. I look forward to continuing to work with you guys as the city now officially is the Music Friendly Communities Program. Congrats again to the City of Bassdrop, to Visit Bassdrop, to Mayor Schrader, our advisory board members. And again, congratulations, guys. It's a wonderful accomplishment.
Thank you, Chip.
Chip, thank you so much. We are just thrilled to add this to our tools that we have. We're film-friendly. We have a Main Street organization. We have a vital downtown. And when I hear about an economy that has 9.6 billion with a B, absolutely Bassdrop with a B wants to participate in that industry. Being music-friendly is mainly about fostering the music industry. And some of our very own council members have some outstanding family members that are well-known musicians. And it's such a wonderful industry. It ties in so well with our location. And I'm so pleased. Thank you, Chip, for helping us fast-track the certification. Our very first meeting was on January 8th, earlier this year, which, when you, when everything that happened in March, that feels like it was years and years ago. But honestly, January 8th was our first meeting. We had our workshop on July 29th. And I have to give a special thank you to Kristi Hunn with Visit Bassdrop. It could not have happened without you. So thank you, Kristi. And Chip, I want you to know, the moment that we can have an in-person celebration, we are looking forward to hosting you in Bassdrop. I'm so honored to accept the designation and we really appreciate everything that you've done. And we look forward to being the best music-friendly community.
With honors.
Thank you, Chip. Chip and I actually were in an all ATX leadership group together. So we go back a little, a few months ago. So it's exciting to have this handoff from you. It feels very personal and exciting. So thank you. And I know on behalf of the creative industry here in Bassdrop, I think this is just, like you said, Mayor, one more thing to kind of add. It's going to enrich this community even more and get a lot of good community support behind it. So thank you very much. It's quite an honor.
Thank you, Chip. In, yeah, one more. So we, I want to also recognize our advisory council and thank them for coming together and coming together quickly. We have some real wonderful talent on our advisory. I'm so excited to have this group of folks that will be pushing this initiative forward for us in Bassdrop. We have Cameron Cox, Kathy Danielson, Lori Dickey, Phil Hurley. I can let the mayor tell that story if she would like to.
I would love to tell this story because I have my mayor hat on all time. So Chip, you hosted the town workshop that we had on July 29th. And on July 31st, I found myself with a mask on, socially distant in a front lar, front yard. And someone said, oh, this is our new neighbor. Let me introduce you. And he, the person introduced me to Phil Hurley. And those of you who know me, it took about 10 minutes to find out, what do you do? What would you like to be engaged in? And oh my gosh, you should have been in the workshop two nights ago. And so even I was, even though I was a little bit pushy that evening, I said, all right, here's what I'm going to do. Here's my card and I want you to think about it overnight. But if you would like to get involved in the music industry here in Bassdrop, please send me an email. The next morning, I had an email. Two nanoseconds later, I had forwarded that information to Susan Smith and it's my understanding he's going to be the chair.
Yes, he's agreed to be the chair of the committee.
So Mr. Hurley, welcome to Bassdrop. This is how we do things.
Doc Jackson, our very own council member, is also on the advisory council. Adina Lewis, Kevin Lippi-Mobby, and Jonas Wilson and Larry Wilson. So we have a very diverse group of, of folks that have an interest in our music-friendly community. So without any further ado, we also have a little video we're going to share with you.
Well, this is Larry of Larryland Music. And I want to give a shout out to Bassdrop County. Say way to go. We are a music-friendly community. And thanks to the Texas Music Office. And thank you, Kristi, and let me be a part of that.
Hi, Bassdrop. This is Bassdrop City Council Member Doc Jackson. And I am excited to congratulate the City of Bassdrop for being accredited as being a Texas-friendly music community. It's such an honor for us to receive this and I'm sure we'll be doing lots of wonderful things in music. So thanks to the City of Bassdrop, Visit Bassdrop, and of course, the Texas Music Organization for recognizing us. I'm sure we'll do great things in music. Go Bassdrop.
I just want to give a shout out to Bassdrop and the Texas Music Office. I am proud to work and play in a music-friendly community.
Hey, congratulations, Visit Bassdrop and City of Bassdrop on gaining the music-friendly designation. Really excited for what the future is going to bring with us. We have a huge history, a long history of great music in Bassdrop County. And I know our venues and our musicians will just take us forward. Thank you so much. And I can't wait to tell everybody about this. Again, congratulations and let's keep the music going.
Congratulations, Bassdrop, on your TMO Music Friendly Communities Certification. My name is Jonas Wilson. I am a Bassdrop resident. I am a record producer, record label owner, all-around musician, film score composer, music educator. I do nothing but music all day. It is my life and love and I love the town of Bassdrop and I'm happy to be here. Thank you for having me as part of your advisory board.
Greetings from the Bassdrop Convention Center. We just want to say a special congratulations to Visit Bassdrop on obtaining our Music Friendly Community Designation for us. Here at the convention center, we celebrate Texas music at the Farm Street Opry every month. And then every August, we do the Boogie Back to Bassdrop Western Swing Festival, where we celebrate the official music for Texas. So we're looking forward to just showcasing Bassdrop even more and all of the talent that we have here in Bassdrop. And once again, congratulations to Visit Bassdrop and a big thank you.
Hi, friends. My name's Phil Hurley and I'm a professional musician here in the central Texas area. I've been making records and touring for the last 30 years. And I'm delighted to hear that Bassdrop is going to be called a Music Friendly Designation. I think that that's perfectly appropriate. And I think that music is going to be a huge part of bringing our community back together again after this difficult year. And I'm delighted to see that Bassdrop is being proactive about this. I think that everyone will benefit from it and I can't wait to contribute in any way that I can to move us forward with great music for lots of people and bring us some joy back. So thank you for having me.
Oh, hey, Lippi from Astro Records here. I just wanted to say a big shout out to the Texas Music Office for helping Bassdrop become a music-friendly community. I really appreciate all the hard work you guys have done.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Chip. I know we fast-tracked this one.
Thanks, Chip.
We are very, very excited about this. And it's just, there's so much to attend for us. Okay, moving back into some numbers. Talking about another thing that's really great is our, is our sales results. Basically, our economic impact through July 31st and amount of leads. And leads is defined as business that we present to our member partners. And so that's like $5.3 million in potential business that we presented to our partners since October 1st. And then our definites, our economic impact of those for the year to date has been about 4.2 million. And that is actual booked business. So a definite means it's been booked, they're coming, and that's the amount of impact we should see to our, in our, in our area. The, the amount of leads that we have for this, for this year is at 37 is mind-blowing. It's blowing all of our records. Even with COVID, we're still booking business. And we're booking into 2021 and 2022. So that's really good news.
When I brag about this, can I say it's attributable, directly attributable to yours?
Yes.
That's what I needed. Thanks.
Lead assist, which means this is in, a lead that we present strictly to the Hyatt. No other, it wouldn't fit in at another member property. So we had seven of those. And then definite assist, seven leads, and then of those seven, three booked. So those are really good numbers.
So the seven leads assist for the Hyatt, is that seven of the 37 or seven addition to the 37?
In addition. Yes, good question.
You always ask my question.
I'm sorry.
No, no. I'm glad the answer, that's all.
We have the great minds, Councilmember Rogers. We think it on the same page. Thank you, Mrs.
You know, and another number that's really important to look up here is our definites in terms of attendees. So when we calculate our economic impact, we do take that into consideration. But that's a lot of people that's coming into our area. Leads service request, and this is defined as not a head in bed. This is just somebody may want a referral for a restaurant to take their attendees out for dinner. Or they want to go kayaking, or they, they want to do something outside of their hotel. Or it could be a catered event in the hotel, whatever. It's just a non-heads and beds. This is measured in contract value. So we had 10 of those that went out, 12 booked. I think that number, the 12 number is probably a carryover because it's higher than the number of leads. But, and then two for the Hyatt, five lost leads and one lost service request. So lost leads means they chose another location. So only five lost leads since October.
Ms. Smith, are you seeing a trend that leads looking for outdoor venues? I mean, I don't want to be outdoor in July and August, but October outdoors could be phenomenal.
Absolutely. We, and we'll get to that in the packet, which is where travelers are heading and how we had to adjust our marketing efforts from pre-COVID to COVID. So we will talk about that.
Is there any way to, excuse me?
Yeah.
Is there any way to translate, say, that 602 attendees into dollar amounts? I know you have some pretty snazzy software. I didn't know if you could do that.
I can do it per, per request, yes. So for every lead and every definite that we book, there, it has its individual number that rolls up into the economic impact.
So is that impact included in the room nights or is this?
Oh, this, I'm sorry, for the service request, the service request is contract value and I did not pull the contract value. Sometimes the properties will share that with us. Sometimes they will not. Sometimes if they go to dinner at Kevin's restaurant, then we don't know what the actual bill was. So if we can get the contract value, we get it. But sometimes we can't.
That's where I was going. I didn't know if you could translate it.
Yes, thank you. Okay. And the next slide, we're on page 45, is the, I wanted to just show you have done with, with the events. Is we had eight, eight of our leads that we just talked about canceled. We had seven definites canceled. And we rescheduled four of those, of those seven. We rescheduled four definites and we rescheduled four service requests, or I'm sorry, canceled four service requests. So it's not a bad number. It could really, in, in other destinations, especially in cities, the numbers are much worse. So the sales department's done a fabulous job at maintaining the business and making sure that we can rebook them and keep their business in the area. Our comp set, real quickly, this is again a slide from last year. It hasn't changed. These are the, the areas that we, we go up against as our competitors. And then we have Omni Barton Creek, Kalahari, as we know, is opening in November. We have the Hilton in Fredericksburg, the Austin Marriott, Georgetown Sheraton. All of these places have meeting rooms and meeting space. And it's just, that's who we compete with.
So is Kalahari still on schedule to open in November?
As I understand it, yes.
I was working with an organization and we were rescheduling an event. And they had, it was an existing hotel. They had let 65% of their employees go and they were having a hard time getting people back. So they were unable to fulfill the obligation. It would have been an October obligation. Where I'm going with this strange question is, I'm wondering, post-COVID, do people want to be at Kalahari Resort? Or do they want to be at a B&amp;B in Bassdrop?
The trends are going towards B's, B&amp;Bs in Bassdrop.
Particularly if the safety and cleanliness are, is front and center. So I feel like I'm stealing your, you'll get to that if I will leave you alone.
No, you're fine. It's good. It's all good.
I guess really my point is that I'm not, I'm not sure if Austin's still going to be the competition. I guess that's really where I was going. If, if there's not such a desire to be in such a compact, you know, is maybe our competition, that may change, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Exactly. That's a, that's a very good.
Speak a little bit too chiming in on the production side of things. The trend is definitely outside of city centers, for sure. And so that's looking at crews and housing and all of that are coming more to rural Bassdrop, especially this area.
Okay, and then our competitive. Okay, um, and then our competitive markets, um, well, we all know what the, how we, we fail and where we, we are really good. The areas that, um, the four areas where we could use some improvement is, uh, we don't have a hotel at the convention center, so that kind of sometimes makes it, we lose out in a situation. Um, we could use some additional full-service hotels with meeting space, uh, transportation from hotels to the convention center in downtown, and then Airbnb, I left it on there, even though it's a competitive market, but what you just said, given COVID, it's actually a good thing for us to have the Airbnbs. Okay, growth sectors, if you look on the left, that's what we were looking at last year, um, pre-COVID, I'm sorry. So those were the growth sectors, those are the areas we were targeting in marketing. And then if you take a look at the, um, after COVID, um, these are the, the sectors that are growing. So you have your outdoor recreation and your vacations, and this is what people are looking for, closer to home, um, our drive market, last minute, less ma, less mass, more mind, where people can just sort of chill out, and of course, health and safety, as I mentioned earlier this evening. So that's the trend, um, and those are the, the sectors that are growing. And I, I didn't, we don't have the numbers with us, um, but the Bastrop State Park, uh, all of the outdoor areas of, um, adventure that we have here are, are our highest-hit number on the website. So shows that, and the Hyatt, along with the Hyatt.
So I'm going to ask you a question that I absolutely do not expect you to know the answer to, and if there's anybody on council or Trey, uh, or Mr. Jobe, you, there's a chance that you might know the answer. Do we know when the dam's going to be finished at the park? I, I think that's a date that we should be aware of, because that puts the lake back, that makes the cabins more attractive, that gives you, uh, bicycling, um, circuit, a running circuit, a walking circuit, you know, but, um, I, I knew, I understood that it was funded, but I didn't know if we know when that's going to be complete, and that, and I'm just suggesting that that may be something that would be a part of your marketing.
That's great.
The dam's complete, and come, come see our new lake, sort of thing.
Oh, absolutely. Perfect. Okay, um, community, communications, um, pre-COVID, those, this is, you know, what we were doing with our community before COVID, and then, again, this is just, this is similar stuff that we've done, that we did last year, there's no change. Um, the hotel occupancy tax, the hot fund distribution for the special events, which is the $75,000 that's outside of our budget. Um, we had three completed events this year, um, already, with their room nights and their economic impact, so you can see that, uh, like the Lost Pines Knife Show, we gave, we awarded them $7,500. Their economic impact was close to $100,000 to the area. Uh, pending events, and actually, since this has been, um, printed, this is actually canceled, and they're looking at rescheduling, um, probably either in the early spring or, again, next fall. And then these are some of the events that, um, we had looked at. We actually never, did not give them any award because it was during the time that they were asking for it, during COVID, so these, um, of the events have been rescheduled. One of our scope of services in our agreement is our convention center partnership, which is great. Uh, they're licensed with our CRM, our Customer Relationship Management System, IE Database, so they're licensed with us, and we work with them on training, and our sales department has been working together with them to help reschedule meetings and book into 2021 and beyond. At this time, I'm going to turn over the Bastrop Visitor Center Partnership to Kay Sepikas, and she'll share the successes we've had there.
Okay, um, well, of course, working with Susan is just a delight and a pleasure. We work together all the time, and as a board member on her board, she can't never get away from me. So, um, anyway, we do work together well, and we've, um, developed the Intercept Study Survey, and Gloria, of course, as you know, is always spot-on in gathering that data that we then provide to Visit Bastrop, and they let us know the numbers, and then you guys probably do some other things with it as well. Um, of course, the numbers are down with COVID, but that's expected. Um, allowing for training, Susan and I have been talking about that, and, um, with the visitor guide rollout, which is coming up, we'll have some training go along with that. Creation of visitor, um, information, it will be the same. And then the, uh, programming, we are really looking forward to coming back together and working together as, as partners. We really are, and not just Visit Bastrop, but Lisa at the Opera House, everybody, you know, Patricia, all of us, so, please, very soon. So anyway, thank you, Susan. It's been a delight to work with you.
We also monitor government affairs and, uh, to make sure that we are tracking any legislative term, um, initiatives that are out there that can help, um, our member partners, or our member partners will call us and say, you know, I heard this is going on, can you help me, uh, help me understanding that? So, um, we, you know, we, this year's all going to be about recovery initiatives, and that's what I would expect to see. Economic trends, um, Mayor, this is what you, we were talking a little bit about earlier. Uh, domestic tourism, which accounts for 75% of the tourism economy, is expected to recover more quickly, as you would imagine, versus international travel. Uh, Texas travelers, um, they, they continue to report, and these numbers are growing all the time, that they are likely to travel by car, um, than any other form of transportation, and likely to drive 300 miles or more each way from home for a vacation. Puts us in a really good spot because of our drive market and where our business comes from. It's, it's a, couldn't have been a better fit. Um, 85% of US travelers are likely to take road trips and just to get outside, and this is all about the change of scenery and the desire to enjoy the outdoors. The, so Bastrop and the Hyatt couldn't be positioned any better. Other economic trends on slide 59 is, an interesting one, I thought, is that 60% of some of the respondents of these different surveys said that they prefer visiting destinations that require face masks in public. Again, it's that being able to see what people are doing for health and safety. Uh, flexibility is key, hotels, airlines, you know, where they don't, they have no change fees now to, to, for travel, uh, hotels are not, um, are not, are offering refundable rates because it's just don't know what's going to happen. So it's, the flexibility is really key right now, uh, and that just shows that the stays in June were up 20% from year over year. Domestic summer stays is up 10% year over year, and it makes up over nearly 85% of the hotel searches overall in June. And when we talk, in a lot of cities, they have a lot of international travel. We are not affected by international travel in, in, in any kind of remarkable way. Going on to, um, revenue enhancement goals and plans, uh, we have, the mayor forwarded, um, actually, an email to me today about electric vehicle charging stations, which we've been talking about for some time. Trey and I are meeting Tuesday morning, um, to talk about that and apply for the funding that, that's coming available this month.
Yeah, the, Council, then, I got that email from EDC, and, um, here we are in the budget season, and it's about grants for charging stations. So, um, I got that to Susan as soon as I could, because we're, definitely a grant we want to go after.
We're on it, right? Mr. Jobe? I said Trey, sorry. Let's see. Um, our marketing collateral, visitor and meaning planner guides, uh, that we'll be going out to print, we should have that out by the end of August. Uh, we were able to sell some advertising in there, that it sort of helps, um, boost our revenue. Not at the best time of the year to be selling advertising, but we did the best that we could with what we had. Um, we are looking at doing some more cooperative marketing and advertising on our website. We, um, are looking at a group that will do, um, it's like a turnkey package to sell ads and banner ads on your website. And if it goes much further than that, then I'm going to need a definition book, Mr. Nelson. And retail, retail will be, is our postcard and our Christmas ornament. We're starting small, and we'll hopefully get into t-shirts, and, um, Councilmember Rogers has been very helpful, um, with this process. We thank you for that. Okay, looking forward, I mean, really, it's, this impact of this crisis has been felt, you know, felt through the entire tourism ecosystem, and our pledge to the city of Bastrop is to make sure that, that we can help restore the confidence of our travelers that are coming here with the safe and clean labels, prepare tourism recovery plans, which we, we are doing on a regular basis to encourage partners and rethink the tourism sector, and, you know, again, we're rethinking the tourism second, sector from inner-city to outside. And just, you know, providing support and recovery measure, measures, work with the city government to ensure that the sectors will be ready to resume. One thing that we don't want to have happen, and we, and we've been very successful even with, with COVID, is that we want to maintain our momentum. We have a huge amount, it's like, it's so pent up. Our momentum is so strong, and we were, and we just, you know, breaking all kinds of records, and, um, we want to maintain that momentum or be able to quickly get back to that when this subsides.
You know, one of the things that comes to mind is our lovely new wide sidewalks on Main Street, and maybe there's something to be done with, you can, you know, come check out our new sidewalks, and you can stay socially distanced, and, you know, if you're outside, and, um, they're, you know, they're brand-new spanking sidewalks, and, um, the, I just think that, that might be a great tie.
That's a great tie. That's an excellent tie. Thank you. So we're just looking ahead, and, um, you know, we just have to, we have to remain nimble, we have to remain flexible, and, uh, we're in a really good position to be able to do that. Does anyone have any questions on any of that? Okay. Um, Kay's going to walk us through our budget. Um, basically, we have, um, the way that we handle our fiscal controls, it's monitored by the, a financial committee, which is a subset of the Board of Directors, and they have CFO by design, and, um, our annual audit as per our city agreement.
So, slide 62, just talks about how we are mindful of the fact that we do have restrictions and guidelines around the things that we do fiscally. So I'm going to go on to 63, and there are a couple notes here to just mention, and that is the first one, on April 28th, the city council meeting where we agreed to suspend the fourth quarter payment of hot funds, which totaled 308,000 and some odd dollars and cents. And then on May 8th, uh, notified of a forecasted shortfall of $136,364 in projected revenue for the next, at the end of this year, like a true-up amount. So I think this, uh, slide should come with a magnifying glass.
Oh, I can do that on here. Colin showed me how.
Oh, cool. So I've been the treasurer since January, so this is, and it took me about six months, so I'm going to try to help you do this in one night, a couple, a couple minutes. And the two columns that I found the most helpful are the first, and these are the columns of numbers, the first column and the third column, because the first column shows you what was spent, and then the third column shows you it compared to the actuals. In this particular case, these actuals, though, are the actual dollars that we would have had at the end of June, not for the whole year. Okay? And so I think what the thing, the things to really notice are how there are some categories where the breaks were put on significantly, like client development, um, dues and subscriptions, I have to pull this up because I can't really see it, uh, advertising, um, the total marketing budget, but there are others that are pretty high, like personnel costs, where these are fixed costs that continued even after COVID started. There's things like rent, there's things like the phone bill, all of those fixed things that still had to be paid, which fall under office expenses, operational costs, those sorts of things. So despite all of that, you can see we're still in pretty good shape, and I'm just going to leave it there for a minute and let you all look at it and see if you have any questions.
My question is, after the meeting, could y'all send us a bigger version?
Yes, sir. I knew that when I put it in there, too.
So we're going to go to the next slide. I don't want to rush, though, you can take your time. So the next slide, if you want to flip back and forth.
I'm looking for reserves. Do you have your reserves called out?
Uh, we don't have that called out in here. Can I talk about that in just one second?
Sure.
So I just want to point out back to the whole, how much time is being reported on that. If you flip to the next one, those numbers are the full-year budget numbers. So if you look at, looked at personnel, you could see the difference between that and the number in the column on the previous document. Does that make sense? I really want that to make sense. Okay, great, okay. So on this one.
Page 65.
Page 65. Uh, the first column, I'm just going to talk about the first column all the way down. That was the budget that we established, 1.4, hot funds, event fund, this is what it consisted of. The board approved an additional 150,000 for marketing, but that was never spent, but we approved that, along with, um, 35,000 that we were hoping to get in non-hot fund, like the retail and that sort of thing, for the total of 1.4. After the revision that happened in April, you see that, um, we took out the 308, and, oh, the non-hot fund is, we didn't make it to 35,000, we made it to 1,200. You see the difference there? And then we took out the 308, so the budget would be 925. We put in 200,000, and that's what our budget will be through September, will be 1.1, with our $200,000 that we will use from reserves.
So what will that leave you in reserves?
250,000.
With, if you take 200 out, you'll still have 250 in reserves.
Is that right, Kay? Yes, yes.
Okay. So over here on the right, you see the numbers there, the changes in forecasting, the different numbers with the totals, the event fund, and then the true-up we had at the time of printing was 91, was the number that Susan was given by Tracy, and it's obviously changed to 136, so that number, it would be different.
And that's based through Tracy's numbers through July, so we still have August and September that can either bring that number down or up, the same with the, her estimate of the actual hot fund revenues.
Okay, you have a question?
So, um, Mr. Jobe, and Council, I don't know if you brought your budget book with you or not, but on page 84 of our budget book that we were given at Council on Tuesday night, it shows that, um, the true-up is the 91839. So, um, when, make sure that you update that when you review it. You're, you're on page 84 of that budget book.
Do you want that number again? It's 134, 360, oh, no, 136, I'm sorry, 136, 364 was the updated number we received. 136, 364, and yeah, that's what it says on this.
Oh, in May, yes, as of May. This is the most current number, the 90.
I'm sorry.
The 91,000 is as of July 31st. This is the accurate number.
Okay, so it, so the number in our book is accurate?
Yes, it is.
My mistake.
All right. Everything in your book is right.
It was my mistake.
The book in 84. Your budget book number in 84, on page 84, that calls the shortfall to be 91839, that is accurate. I was just trying to keep us all on the same page. Yeah, okay.
My apologies.
Got too many books. Okay, so do you want to talk about that 91?
Yeah, let's talk about that. So you can see a difference between, in our expense column of, uh, approximately 1 million for next year that we're anticipating in expenses, and our total budget with the true-up taken out would end up being 842,000. So there is a difference there. And so, um, what we would, what we would like to ask the council to consider is that the $91,000 be forgiven as a true-up, and we will put in, um, the equal amount to get us to our budget number out of our reserves. Uh, what we are trying to avoid is liquidating all of our reserves, so we're looking at around 100,000 coming out of our reserves, and that would leave us with 150,000 in reserves. So if the city was able to, uh, forgive that true-up, then, um, that would help us get to where we need to be.
Okay, so let's talk numbers specifically. So if you are before the true-up, you're at 934, 356, correct?
Yes.
And so what you're, if you do not have to do that true-up, you're at 934, 356, and then you would add 200,000 to that, that you would take out of your reserves and leave you with 250?
No, 100,000.
You were hoping to only take 100 out?
Well, we need to go from the 934 to the 1032.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So the 934, and then you would add 100, and you'd be at your 1034, you'd basically be at your budget.
Yes.
So Council, um, this was, I had, I had knowledge of this from a meeting that was right before our. right before our council meeting, and staff, as would fully be expected with a conversation with Mr. Hoffman, no way would he make the assumption that council was going to approve waiving the true-up. So, that's why it's presented in our budget book the way it is. I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that we won't be voting on anything tonight, so it's something for you to think about, and we can talk about it at our workshop. The comment that I would make is for us, that the 91839 is gone. They already got the check. It's not a part of our reserves. It's not a part of our book, with the exception that it's shown as the credit. So, we will have a conversation with Mr. Hoffman because the 91839 that we're showing as an overpayment credit makes the reserves in the hot funds higher by 91,000. So, so the reserves that you see on page 84 would come down by the 91839, or by 10, or by 50, or by whatever number, or it could be too bad, so sad, that's the rules. So, that's a conversation that we can have at the workshop. But for clarity, your total reserves right now is 450,000. And so, if, if council was to forgive the overpayment of the 918, and you pulled 100 out, it would leave you with 350,000 in reserves for your next fiscal year.
Well, we also took out 200 of those reserves already to end the fiscal year.
Oh, okay.
Because of, in lieu of the payment.
So, you're at 250 and taking 100 out of that? Okay.
In lieu of the final quarter payment?
In lieu of not getting the final quarter payment, we put in our reserves to cover the operating expenses.
Let me ask you one other question. I should have read through the contract before I came tonight, didn't. What is your mandated reserve level?
There is none.
Okay. And I believe it's because the, the contract assumed that, that the city would hold the reserve for hot funds, because we're the ones divvying it out. So, they, I think that's why it's not required in the contract.
Gotcha.
Okay, so, since I have screwed this up three times, let me try you one more time.
Okay.
You, because, you knew, you had an overpayment of Q3, and you did not receive Q4. Because of that, you pulled 200,000 out of your reserves to be able to make the end of your year. It is now the end of your year, and you still technically, per the contract, owe back 91,000.
Correct.
You are hoping to not do that, because now your reserves are down to 250. So, if we don't forgive that, and you try to stay at your budget, you are nearly wiped out all of your reserves.
Exactly.
And so, you're asking, basically, can we pull 100 out of ours, which would take us down to 150, and will you forgive the 91? And then you're at your budget of just over a million dollars, which for reference is down by 25-ish, 30% from the previous year.
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody there? Councilmember Rogers has a question. I can see.
I do have a question. All right, so I, just on, I understand what, now the mayor's got it going right with the 150. The event funds, I know that several of your events, I know our, our year starts October 1, and a few of those events are in that normal top fourth quarter. So, you'll still be able to plan to give the 75, even though some of those big events won't happen this quarter? Or you hold some of it for the net, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Because like the car show and stuff can't happen, and that's usually some of the ones we give big things to. How do you plan to do that?
The 75,000 is just a pass-through. We don't, it's revenue and expense, we don't, it's really not, it's in the budget because we handle the money, but if it's.
It's a, it's a separate bucket?
It's a totally separate bucket.
Oh, I understand. I understand that we give it to you because we don't like making the decision. We like to let you guys make the decision. I totally get that. I'm just saying that because some of the bigger ones that normally get some of that funding will, will be canceled because it's this time of that year, do you think we'll hold on to some of that? Because of some of the big events aren't there, so we'll have more the next year?
As an example, for Back in the Badge is a perfect example. They just canceled. I sent them an email requesting a refund. So, we will, as we did last year, we carried over, I think it was an extra maybe 5,000 or 6,000, we carried that over into this year's budget, and we would do the same, which Tracy approved at our last council meeting.
Oh, no, that's fine.
So, yes, so we'll just carry it forward.
Normally, things that are, are normal events that will happen on a regular basis, and you kind of know what you normally give for those events, you'll kind of pocket it knowing you're going to do the next.
Right. And I also just want to share that the Corvette Invasion is coming back. And so, we made an agreement, and I checked in with Connie, and I believe we checked with the attorney, but we, they're holding that money to, for the next event.
Oh, no, no, that's fine.
Yep.
I'm just curious what you're going to do for the next year coming forward, those events coming up, not just this past. So, no, you answered my question.
Did I? Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So, what you've confirmed is the 75 is a separate bucket, so it's not like if you don't use it for events that you're going to sneak it over to marketing.
Oh, no.
It is a standalone bucket, and I don't mean sneak, but you know, it just can't be blended with everything else. It's a standalone bucket. And to Councilmember Rogers' point, you may, in the first six months of the next fiscal year, you may have not spent, there's not the 5Ks, there's not some of the other stuff that you might have had, but you're hanging on to it to make sure that you use it in the right way. And some of what you're doing, like on the Corvette Invasion, is instead of making them write a check back, it's, you're keeping it with, booking it already for next year.
Which they have.
So, you're using it as a carrot to try to have continued business.
Exactly.
Okay. Councilmember Peterson, any questions? Absolutely.
Yeah, just one comment that we discussed on pages like 46 through 49. The trend to tourism now is going from like to hotels, to B&amp;Bs. The mayor talked about the cabins and the park, and a lot of people are camping now. And those are things, I know you guys are looking at, but I just wanted to comment that you guys are doing a great job, because I get kind of jealous of travel trailers passing by my house every day. I kind of want one.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we've got the yurts. I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that we have within the community that could be helpful. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yeah, I want to kind of follow up on Councilmember Peterson's comment. You know, the uncertainty of the pandemic right now and people's reaction to it is going to differ over the years. And people are going, when, when they finally get out, it's going to be a wellness activity. I got to get out. And, and I think what you all have done, we're well-positioned to be able to meet that, that prescription for, for wellness activity. And I just, I want to commend you all on being prepared to meet that uncertain demand that's, that's coming out. So, I, I want to tag on with that, because that's vitally important that you all recognize that, in my mind, you all are going in the right direction.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ennis?
How did you come up with the number 859356?
What page are you on?
I'm on the same, same page. 65.
That is a forecast from Tracy Waldron. It's her forecast for next year's hot funds that would be our portion.
Okay, thanks.
Do you want me to put this on?
No.
I would recommend no. I would counter that recommendation.
Oh, okay.
You, you opened, you opened a can of worms. You were doing so well, and we got to 719, and you blew it. The, the other question that I have for the executive board, is there anything in the contract that we, and council, this is for you as well, is there anything in the contract that you would like us to take another look at? I know that we went to quarterly updates, and, and council, are we cool with continuing that? And is there anything else? Councilmember Ennis, are you suggesting that you want to mandate a reserve percentage, or is that something you want to think about?
No, if we're mandate, if we're, if we're keeping it on this end, then that's fine.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that we're not getting too close to the edge.
Is there, are you all aware of anything you'd like to change?
There is one thing that I would like to ask, I think, just to be, be more efficient. We have two reports that we provide to the city council. One is a business plan, and one is the, this council joint. It's really one in the same. So, I would like to just strike the business plan from our agreement, because this is what we're doing right here. So, it's like we're doing it twice.
Anybody opposed to only getting one presentation? Councilmember Rogers?
I see what you've presented here, the business plan is, you had to present another one?
Yeah, we present the business plan telling you what we're going to do, and then we tell you here what we, what we're going, what we did and how we did it. So, it's, it's really kind of all one in the same. It's the same information. Like I was preparing the business plan, and I'm like, well, this is just a cut and paste from this. So, it's really the same thing. We have our strategic plan. So, now we have a strategic plan that we present to you, then a business plan, which is almost identical to the strategic plan, and then we have this plan. So, there's three plans out there that are all saying the same information.
When is, when does the business plan due?
It's due in, I think it's the first, September.
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, that's a way wasted time, right?
I don't need another book.
No, thank you. So, maybe what we look at, because I think the contract requires that this joint meeting was really supposed to be in July, and it may have been when it first started, well, we wouldn't have the business plan, you know, but now that you're running, I would invite you to visit with Mr. Jobe and Mr. Hoffman, and maybe we agree that the, that we're going to get one presentation, and it's in August, you know, maybe around this time where it's when, before we're doing the budget.
And it's in this.
And you know what you're doing. Yeah. The timing on this really is quite nice to have this, to be able to compare to the budget book.
I think it's actually better timing, yes.
Is that great with you guys?
Yeah, so if her business plan is in this whole display, then that, I mean, this whole book.
I can just cut and paste and give you, like you said, you just get another book.
Oh, no, I don't want a book. That's what I said. No more books.
We don't, we don't need.
Oh, may I speak?
Certainly.
Okay. No, I just wanted to congratulate Visit Bastrop on the, the way that this presentation has gone so far, and the work that they've done in the community. I've heard nothing but good things about it, and I'm really pleased with, when we were first developing this DMO, I know there were a lot of concerns from citizens and others, but I think what's happened is just really remarkable, because they're getting the word out about our community, of different publications. The citizens locally are very pleased with what's happening, and I just think that it's important that we keep supporting them for the work that they're doing. And I'm just really happy. And now that we're going to be a music-friendly community as well, I think we're just going to really do nothing but great things in Bastrop. So, I congratulate them for the work they've done.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. So, you're okay with their doing, continuing with quarterly presentations moving forward?
Definitely.
And you're okay with changing that timing to an August and doing one meeting instead of doing two meetings?
Right. That, I think that works out so much better for us anyway, because it's right in time, as you said, with the budget book and everything, and it just makes more sense for us to do it like this, and gives us time to work it all together.
So, council, we'll have our workshop next week, and we'll have conversations about, and we're going to be real honest with you guys, just like we were with the essential assets that are asking for it. There's only so many dollars, and we got hard decisions, and we got to figure out how to, how to divvy it up. And to Councilmember Ennis's stand, statement regarding reserves, you know, nobody wants to wipe out all of their reserves, and, and we've got to make responsible decisions, and it's really hard not knowing exactly what the hot funds are going to do going forward. So, we've got some, got some discussions and to things to have, not trying to, not trying to stress you out, you know, we'll want to do what's, what's reasonable. Mr. Jobe, I'll leave it to you, Mr. Hoffman, and Ms. Smith to decide if there's any amendments that need to be made to the contract, and then we'll just expect that to show up at a future city council meeting. And council, then we'll have an opportunity to see any of those adjustments to the contract and vote on it. Ideally, it'd be awesome if we could get that done before October, but I don't know how extensive the, the amendments might be.
It's really easy.
So, okay. It sounds like we're all pretty much on the same page.
Do you have a question?
Sure, absolutely. Miss Speaker?
So, I'm going to ask this question as Visit Bastrop, but also as a visitor center and museum, and since it's a time when we really don't know what to expect, is it, is there a chance that we could come back in February at either organization or others that say, hey, wow, the hot funds are skyrocketing, and you know we want to ramp up again?
Oh, no, absolutely not. We're putting them in our pockets. Of course you can.
No, I know you're not going to do that, but.
Of course you can.
It's never happened before, so I don't know if it's something that would even be entertained.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, we put the brakes on because we thought sales tax was going to fall through. And then I've made some, it's kind of cute to me. I think there's some families that have started some family projects, and then have decided there's a reason that there's professional contracts for some of those family projects. But we've benefited because sometimes the supplies for those projects have been purchased not once, but twice at our, at our local home improvement stores. So, we didn't see the sales tax fall off, and, and in March, none of us had any idea what was going to happen. So, that, our chief financial officer is conservative, because that's what you are when you're a chief financial officer, and that may well be the approach that council takes next week. But obviously, as we get updates, and particularly once it's money in the bank, and we've been through, and we now know better information than we have, I think we'll be willing to look at everything, because we'll be wanting the Opera House and the visitor center and the art center to be supporting what Visit Bastrop is marketing to people to come do. So, if it's, you know, maybe the art center takes more advantage of their, of the, their backyard area, maybe, maybe the museum is doing outdoor exhibits and, and more of the walk, the new sidewalk tours. I think none of us really know exactly how it's going to come back, but it goes across the board, we would be looking at that, absolutely, once we have better info.
Right. And, you know, I think for us too, is just being able to, when those floodgates open, is to be able to continue that momentum that we had going, and all of our indicators are moving in that direction, so.
Council meets twice a month, and we're always open to making the right decisions. Councilmember Ennis, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson, Councilmember Ennis?
I know this is near and dear to Councilmember Rogers' heart, and I know there's been some preliminary discussions. And some of the onus of this is on council to develop a, a really good operational plan for the rodeo arena, but I really would like to get that on our radar as far as developing it as a, as a tourist attraction.
Councilmember Rogers and I have had several discussions about this, and I'm happy to talk about it again and figure out a way to make it work. For some of the events that we have, like as an example, the Corvette Invasion, they don't want to be out there because of, it's, there's gravel, and there's dirt, and there's rocks. So, finding the right event to fill that space is something that we do look for, but I would love to have some more conversations about it. It's always on, it's always on my list.
I think we're talking about rodeos.
Oh, actual rodeos.
Yeah, and I think part of the.
I was thinking about it as also event space.
Part of the assessment's been that there's some big money that needs to be spent to get it functional for a rodeo. So, that's, I think that's a part of the, part of the conversation.
Right. Oh, yeah. Cherry, Kay, get on that.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Well, to miss the biggest point, you know, this is, the DMO is still an evolutionary process. It, we're, we're not that old. Visit Bastrop is not that old. And we recognize that they're an open and thoughtful process, there's going to be changes, there's going to be wrought. The evolution process this year had some strange DNA injected into by COVID-19, but we still had to move forward. So, yes, if there's changes, because I think that your board has worked too hard to be entrenched in, into a single thought process as things evolve. For example, the Tesla factory nearby is going to have a dramatic impact on, on what we do, both as a, as a destination, as well as, as, as economic development. So, I just, I would encourage you all to come back as, as this continues to evolve So I just, I would encourage you all to come back as, as this continues to evolve and improve, and it will improve.
And we're working, I've been having conversations with Cameron about Tesla and